Welcome to Saginaw City's Council Meeting tonight. Tonight, we begin with our prayer and pledge led by Councilman Michael Balls.
We all bow our heads, please. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful. Please look over these proceedings this evening so that the city council and the manager and all employees do the right thing for the city of Saginaw. And please allow us to be real mindful of all the citizens of the city of Saginaw. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
A pledge is leading.
Amen. In the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with his law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Millen is pre-excused. Councilman Tibbs. Councilwoman, woman Bench. Mayor Protem Clark. Councilmember Moore.
President.
Councilmember Bryant.
President.
Councilmember Balls.
President.
Councilmember Humphries is also pre-excused. Mayor Browning.
President.
We have seven members present and two excused.
And remind the audience tonight to remain quiet and refrain from speaking too loud to each other's. We discourage cheering, booing, or rude or other obnoxious behavior. At this time, if you would check your electronic devices and make sure they're turned down for us, please. This is special reminder to our city council because it's quite embarrassing when it happens to a city council member during our proceeding. So please make sure that those are turned down. And Madam Clerk?
We are now at announcements.
Yes, and before we get into announcements, I have an announcement that I want to make right off the top, council members. And at this time, I would like to read the letter that I have authored to the citizens of Saginaw, reference the Charlottesville violence that we've seen recently. And at this time, I'd like to read this. Dear Saginaw, dear citizens of Saginaw, Saginaw takes pride in its diversity and inclusiveness. We appreciate and value the uniqueness of each individual. We treat everyone with respect and dignity. Hate, speech, and violence are not welcome in our community. The violence in Charlottesville is a stark reminder that there is still much work to be done on the long and the difficult road of racial healing. While racism is undeniably a part of our America's past, it has no place in our future. Racist violence and bigotry, which travels under many names and group affiliations, rob us of our safety and freedom. Starting today, the fight to defend our inclusive, diverse, free society is in our hands. Let us join together with leaders of our faith community, social activists, businesses, and others to send a clear message that we will not tolerate hate and acts of domestic terrorism. Sincerely, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple announcements as well. City Hall will be closed Monday, September 4th, for the Labor Day holiday. And your curbside trash pickup will be one day later, the week of September 4th, due to the Labor Day holiday. And the next regular city council meeting will be Monday, September 11th, at 6:30 PM. Mayor, next we have a proclamation recognizing the Saginaw Career Complex students for finishing first place in the Pro Start National Championship in Restaurant Management.
Okay. We look forward to this every year. Seems like it's becoming an annual thing, which we're so excited about. So I have a certificate of recognition. So at this time, would the following people come up to the podium? Abigail Billick. Amy, and I am not even got you. Amy, if you'll come up here, you'll step right at the podium for me. And I am going to have Amy pronounce your last name for me, so I, and so you'll understand. Amy, last name?
Thank you very much.
And Carol Leah? Carol Leah? Is that right?
She's not here.
And so, Grenias? Grenias, is that correct? Thank, Grenias, thank you. Okay. Whereas on June 21st, 2017, thousands of members of the Health Occupations Students of America from across the United States, Canada, Samoa, and Puerto Rico compete each year, I'm sorry, compete against each other to prove their expertise and knowledge in healthcare-related events at the 40th Annual HOSA International Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida. And whereas Abigail and Amy and Cornelia? Did I say it right? Cornelia? Carolie? Carolie, sorry. Students at the Saginaw Career Complex achieved second place at the state level in the medical innovation category and were able to advance to the HOSA Future Health Professionals National Championship. These students were part of an elite group of state-level champions from across the United States competing in this extremely intense national competition, developing the knowledge and skills to become a future health professional. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and all our citizens, do hereby extend this appreciation of pride and offer congratulations for their performance at the HOSA Future Health Professional National Championship. We commend these students for their outstanding achievements and for being a stellar example to the youth in our community, confirming what hard work and dedication can accomplish. In witness thereof, I have hereunto and set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 21st day of August in the year of our Lord 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilmembers Floyd Clock, our Mayor Protem; Councilmembers Michael D. Balls; Annie Bench; Clint Bryant; John Humphries; John Millen; Brenda F. Moore; and Damon L. Tibbs; and City Manager Timothy Morales. Ladies, would you come forward, please? Thank you. Go right back, oh, you're welcome to say something if you'd like to. Okay. If you'd like to, please do. Okay. Go ahead, just step right up there.
All I wanted to say is the HOSA's been a great experience for me. It's helped me mature as a coming-up adult and that without it, I wouldn't be where I am today. And it's helped me give confidence into me going in the medical field. And it's just been a great opportunity, and I thank SEC for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Proclamation recognizing Saginaw Career Complex students for their performance at the Skills USA and Health Occupations of America State and National Competitions.
And that would be Jacob Parcell? Is that right? And Carmen Clark? Both of you, now step up for me, please. Whereas on June 19th, 2017, more than 6,000 students worked against the clock and each other through their expertise in categories such as electronics, computer-aided drafting, precision machining, medical assisting, and culinary arts at the 53rd Annual Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference Championship in Louisville, Kentucky. And whereas Jacob Parcell and Carmen Clark, students at the Saginaw Career Complex, achieved first place at the state level in their skill category and were able to advance to the Skills USA National Championship. Jacob and Carmen were part of an elite group of other state-level champions from across the United States competing in this extremely intense and demanding national championship. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and all of our citizens, do hereby extend this expression of pride and offer congratulations to both of you for your performance in the Skills USA National Championship. We commend Jacob and Carmen for their outstanding achievements and for being a stellar examples to the youth in our community, confirming the hard work and dedication can accomplish. In witness thereof, I have hereunto and set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed on this 21st day of August in the year of our Lord 2017. Signed, Mayor Dennis D. Browning. Councilmembers Mayor Protem Floyd Clock, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Millen, Brenda F. Moore, and Damon L. Tibbs; and Timothy Morales, our City Manager. Congratulations. Would you come forward? If you'd like to say a few words, you certainly can. That was, that was not part of the competition, huh? Okay. We got Skill Center, we gotta work on that public speaking thing, so, okay.
Mayor, our next proclamation is recognizing Saginaw Career Complex Advisor Julie Ivan for receiving National Advisor of the Year at the Skills USA National Championship.
I'll have to do this last. Apparently, that's not last. Do you have another set of proclamations?
We have, well, when you read off for the national, you called the HOSA group up, so the national girls did not come up. You read the wrong certificate. Correct. Okay.
All right. On this particular group, we have Katania Jenkins, Chantel Gonzalez, Naomi Perez, and Isabella Dean. Will it come up for me, please? So did I read the wrong one to the? Okay. So I'm, 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 I'm back on track. Thank you. It's a lot of these. Isn't that wonderful? We have a lot of outstanding. Mark that down, news. We have a lot of outstanding young people in Saginaw here. Whereas on behalf of the Saginaw City Council and the citizens of Saginaw, it is an honor and a privilege to recognize Katania Jenkins, Chantel Gonzalez, Naomi Perez, and Isabelle Dean, students at the Saginaw Career Complex for their first-place victory at the 2017 National Pro Start Invitational held in Charleston, South Carolina on April 28th through May 30th, 2017. And whereas this team from the Saginaw Career Complex competed against 41 other state-level champions, presenting their innovative and promising restaurant concept to a panel of restaurant industry leaders, state restaurant association executives, and other judges from top post-secondary schools. Whereas members of the Saginaw Career Complex team were judged on marketing strategies, recipes, menu selection, and prices, and critical thinking skills. This is the first time a team from Michigan has ever won this award. Each member of the Saginaw Career Complex team walked away with over $300,000 in scholarships. And whereas this victory is not only a huge personal triumph for these students, but also a great achievement for the instructors at the Saginaw Career Complex who also spent countless hours over the past years coaching and preparing their students for this national competition. And whereas these Saginaw Career Complex students must possess an athlete's discipline and dedication, spending the months prior to the national pro-start event, preparing several hours a day, five days a week. We are proud of the reputation that Katania, Chantel, Naomi, and Isabella have earned as a winner for their hard work and the example they have set for others as exemplary students and future leaders in our community. Now therefore be resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and all of our citizens, do hereby extend this expression of pride and offer congratulations to Katania Jenkins, Chantel Gonzalez, Naomi Perez, and Isabella Dean for their first-place finish in the National Pro Start Invitational. We commend these students for their outstanding achievements and for being stellar examples to the youth in our community, confirming what hard work and dedication can accomplish. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 21st day of August in the year of our Lord 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning. Mayor, Mayor Protem Floyd Clock, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Millen, Brenda F. Moore, and Damon L. Tibbs; and Timothy Morales, our City Manager. Congratulations for a national championship. Any comments from yous, please? Oh, there you go. You get, this is actually, this is actually from your staff.
I wanted to say that I'm very proud of my team. We're four very strong and independent and intelligent women that represented Saginaw in a very positive way to the rest of the United States. And we couldn't have done it without our super, super, super awesome instructor, Mrs. Ivan, who's another very strong and intelligent woman who represented Saginaw in a positive way in front of the entire nation. So thank you, Mrs. Ivan.
Thank you, ladies.
Great honor to present this proclamation to you. You continually, every year, keep bringing back these students. Even though the faces change sometimes, the high level is always, always there. And not only competing locally and state, but nationally and even internationally in the past. And so, we have a proclamation presented to Ms. Julie Ivan. Whereas Julie Ivan, a culinary instructor at the Saginaw Career Complex and a USA Skills, a Skills USA Advisor, has been nationally recognized as the 2017 Advisor of the Year for her dedication and leadership to the students at the Saginaw Career Complex. And whereas for the past 14 years, Julie Ivan has served as a Skills USA Advisor, helping students discover and grow in their career passions. Through the work and enthusiasm of Ms. Ivan, the Saginaw Skills USA Chapter has grown to help thousands of Saginaw Career Complex students learn to appreciate their abilities and the value they can add to our workforce. And whereas Julie Ivan serves on the State Technical Committee for Culinary Arts and as a World Skills Bakery Expert, helping the World Skills Technical Committee to develop the international competition. As a leader and advisor who challenges and inspires her students to excel, Ms. Ivan has advised several students from Saginaw to win at the national championship level. And whereas Julie Ivan has often been recognized for her commitment to her students and her ability to develop world-class workers, leaders, and responsible citizens, Ms. Ivan was recently selected the Skills USA 2017 National Advisor of the Year and will represent the United States at the international level at the World Skills Competition in Abu Dhabi, is it? United Arab Emirates, as the U.S. Bakery Expert here, right here in city Saginaw. And whereas, in this, this is a tremendous honor for Julie Ivan and exemplifies her level of skill and the impact she has made at the Saginaw Career Complex. We are proud of the reputation Ms. Ivan has earned as a winner for her hard work and the example she has set for the students. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members, do hereby extend to Ms. Julie Ivan our sincere congratulations for having been recognized as the Skills USA National Advisor of the Year. We commend Ms. Ivan for her outstanding achievements and the positive impact she has made in the lives of her students and in our community. We congratulate Ms. Julie Ivan and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all of her future endeavors. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this 21st day of August in the year of our Lord 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning. Floyd Clock is Mayor Protem. Michael D. Balls. Annie E. Bench. Clint Bryant. John Humphries. John Millen. Brenda F. Moore. Damon L. Tibbs. And City Manager Timothy Morales. Congratulations, Julie. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I love my job, and I love teaching for the city of Saginaw. I've been here for 33 years, and I couldn't imagine another place to teach at. And I am so lucky to have these people as students. It's not me. It's the students. We let them shine, and they just go for it. And to be picked as National Advisor from 19,000, over 19,000 different advisors throughout the United States was, you know, unreal this summer. And then to be going to Abu Dhabi in October and representing Saginaw, Michigan, you know, we're, I'm, I'm thrilled to be a part of the city and to watch our youth grow.
And one, and one more, please. Would the parents of any of those students who are in the audience, please stand up? I want to clap. Thank you. Parents and family, thank you so much. Thank you so much, parents and families, for all the hard work that you have done. Madam Clerk?
Personal appearances.
And as we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you are speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will be, will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. So be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTB, and to the councils so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to our city staff. Clerk Harper?
Our first speaker did call and withdrew his name, so he will not appear tonight. Our next speaker then will be Pastor Charles Coleman.
Thank you so much. My name is Charles Coleman. I'm the pastor of New Faith Temple Church, 2243 Compton Street here in Saginaw is my home address. And I'm speaking on behalf of the New Ezekiel Project, the Saginaw branch of the NAACP, who will have their own presentation, and the Bridge Center, which will have their own presentation. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk, ladies and gentlemen of council. A little over a week ago, this nation experienced violence and covert racist activity in Charlottesville, Virginia, between white nationalist demonstrators and counter-protesting groups. In the street clashes that ensued, countless of people were harmed, culminating in the death of a counterpro, of one counter protester, Heather Hyer. She was a young white woman, a paralegal protesting white supremacist, and she was a strong ally to causes calling for equality and civil rights. Her murder at the hands of a self-described neo-Nazi and white supremacist in many ways punctuates the chaos and cruelty brought to bear by empowered racism. We all grieve the loss of life, contemporary or historic, that follows in the wake of actions blatant with white supremacists, whether it's Heather Hyer, Emmett Till, Michael Schwerner, Andrew Goodman, or Dr. Martin Luther King. We warn, we mourn the widespread suffering, that proliferation of racism, bigotry, fascism, and discrimination that white supremacy brings in all forms, historic or contemporary. The pall of these wrongs permeates the history of our now-great nation. It's high time that as Americans, we turn our back on the darkest recesses of our shared history and stop sugarcoating and even celebrating the wrongs of our nation's past. The time has come, as the great nation we are, to be courageous enough and wise enough to acknowledge the evils of the past, just as we plainly and passionately commend and celebrate our past and current heroes and history. Further, we as Americans must confront the reality that racism is alive and thrives in some parts of our society. As the 45th President of the United States, President Donald J. Trump belatedly stated, "Racism is evil, and those who cause violence in its name are criminals and thugs," including the KKK, neo-Nazis, white supremacists, and other hate groups that are repugnant to everything we hold dear as Americans. With that in mind, we call out to each of you as individuals and together as a united community to join us in forging a new era exemplary of our shared values. We call out to you to reject racism and violence and hatred, suffering, and oppression it creates and thrives on. Today, we, the New Ezekiel Project, the NAACP, and the Bridge Center, ask you, ask you to join in our future efforts to address the issues of race, inequality, and discrimination in our community. These efforts will include public forums and other proactive steps aimed at bringing us together as a community and as a nation. Our efforts begin today.
Our next speaker is Leola Wilson.
I am here speaking on behalf of the NAACP Saginaw Branch, which is located at 515 North Washington. I would like very much for members of my executive committee who have accompanied me to please also stand and be recognized. To Mayor Browning and city council members, city staff, and members of the public, it is my pleasure to be here to say good evening to you and to experience the things that I have experienced that are coming out of Saginaw Public Schools. A little over a year ago, I came before you to, as I characterized at that time, to A little over a year ago, I came before you to, as I characterized at that time, to give you a pat on the back. The occasion was the announcement of the appointment of four new police officers. That included one Hispanic candidate, two African-Americans, and a Caucasian officer. Tonight, I'm here representing the Saginaw NAACP Branch to once again to support what we feel is a step in the right direction with the announcement of the hiring of two new firefighters, John Pans and Jonathan Starling. Before we go overboard in celebration, let me point out that Mr. Pans is the first African-American firefighter to be hired in the city fire department in the past 18 years, out of a total of some 35 individuals hired over the same period of time. Though this can be viewed as a step in the right direction and reflects a response on the part of the city that addresses the issue of diversity in the fire department, which the NAACP has spoken about frequently over the past few years. Let me just say, there is no question more that more must be done to address racial and gender balance throughout City Hall. Today, we ask that you accept our pat on the back, but we also want you to know that we still have major concerns about the lack of diversity in the fire department and throughout the rest of the city's workforce. So in closing, thank you for sending what many of us feel is a positive message to Saginaw residents. We request that you continue to extend every effort to meet the challenge before you of creating a workforce that is highly skilled and one that reflects diversity and gender balance. Thank you again and good evening.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
And I remind council members that you have a five-minute time limit, and we begin tonight with Councilmember Michael Balls.
I'd like to thank the citizens for showing up for the city council meeting this evening. The students from the Career Opportunity Center, I'm so happy for you guys to win awards locally, state, internationally, and let you know that this is going to be on your path to life, to doing something great, and bringing it back to the City of Saginaw. I would too like to thank your instructor for doing such a fine job of bringing you guys here every year, showing off what Saginaw finest has to offer. Then the fact that she is an expert baker, we would appreciate it maybe she bring some baked goods for some of the council members next time she show up, so we can tell the people about how good your baked goods are. I'd like so to welcome Ezekiel Project and the NAACP for coming to the city council meeting and expressing some of the things that the city council and some of the members here have been talking about since we've been elected to the city council. We too would like to see more diversity on all the police force, which has happened, and especially with the police department too, I mean with the fire department. We know there's a lot of citizens here in the City of Saginaw that could use some good-paying jobs right here in our city to make our youth feel good to know that their fathers are getting up and going to work in their city that they live in. We need to see that. Association brings about assimilation, and when kids can see their fathers going to work, that makes them want to go to work. So hopefully, we will continue on that path to hiring minorities and other female genders on our police and fire department. You know, and talking about the violence that happened the other day in our nation, you know, these things happen unfortunately. Sometimes the snake raises ugly head, and that's the only time you can get it cut off. But here in the City of Saginaw, hopefully, we don't have that many problems here because we've come here to this podium and expressed those views, let everybody know how we feel and that we're not going to be tolerating that here in the City of Saginaw. So I would hope that everybody here on both sides of the aisle can work on those issues here in the City of Saginaw to make sure we don't have those issues here in our city. Because I'm telling you, when it happens, you know, it's terrible. I ran for city council because of an incident that happened with Milton Hall, and hopefully, anything like that will never happen again. And I think it had a lot to do with diversity on our police force. But I must admit that we do have a lot more diversity on our police force now, and I don't think this situation probably happen again. So I'd like to thank, personally thank Chief Ruth for being a diverse police chief in our city. Thank you very much. And hopefully, we can pass that on to the rest of the departments. Other than that, that's Ruth's honorable comments.
Good evening, everybody. I didn't hear you say anything, so I didn't know where to go. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us here at tonight's city council meeting. And those who are walking or watching at home, I just want to begin by saying thank you so much to Ms. Ivan. I've worked at SCC in and out, and I see you guys there nights, weekends, all the time, trying to get things done and preparing. And you guys do such a phenomenal job. You put us, not only, as the mayor said, on the map. You put us on the map in the state and local, but now the world. So that's just amazing. We dwell on the possibilities here in the City of Saginaw, so we're so thankful for you and some of the repeat success that we have seen in the City of Saginaw. So thank you, guys, and Mr. Little as well, for the work that you guys do over at SCC. We've had a very busy couple of weeks here in the city with all the summertime events with Light Up the City and all the great things that are going on. I had the privilege of attending the Family Fun Day at Huntington Event Park with Saginaw Public Schools and Consumers Energy. We handed out T-shirts and backpacks. We had over 700 people there. It was a phenomenal day. And I think that really is what speaks to the spirit of our community. What you're seeing around in the country, that definitely is not an example or a representation of what our community is. We believe in diversity. We've been working on the city's vision and mission, and we've got our feedback from our community as to what our core value should be. So thank everybody who participated in that. Really, aside from that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of our presenters, all of our public speakers, and for the young people. It is always exciting to see you here, but I'm going to ask you to do me a favor. We need you to get involved and come more often. And that's not just the students from one school, it's the students from all over the city. We can't do it without you, because you're our future. So we do need your input. As Councilman Bryant said, the last couple of weeks have been mighty, mighty busy. I attended a workshop in MML on the marijuana. It is coming, so we might as well get ready. Each council person along with the city manager and clerk, you all have copies of it. If you've got any questions, we need to talk about it, because we do need to get ready for it. It's not a pro or con thing. When the state comes in, they're not going to ask us how we feel. It's just going to happen. But we have to be ready when it comes. And what I mean by that is, we have to start developing when. We don't want to wait till the last minute. You know, we want to try to get on it, to try to make it work for our city as well. On the 31st of August, from 4:00 to 6:00, for the last couple of months, maybe three months, we've had labor council come in, and we are trying to work with labor council. They've asked me to announce that the Saginaw Museum will be unveiling, they will be celebrating and unveiling, a labor statue which represents the working people of the City of Saginaw. It is a free activity. We invite all to come. We really want our young people to come so that you can view our Saginaw Museum. If you don't know where it is, it's at 1126 North Michigan Avenue. Please come. It is a free activity from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Last but not least, on Wednesday, Light Up the City. We will be at Old Jiffy Way Park from 5:30 to 7:30. Please come out, young people, please come out. You get a chance to see me dance like I always do, but you get a chance to see us let our hair down and just have a good time. There will be refreshments. Everything is absolutely free. If you want to know more about the exhibit that's happening on August 31st, you will have skilled tradespeople there at a booth who will be able to tell you about becoming an electrician, pipe fitter, like Councilman Balls. And you can see how we got some good money that Saginaw can make, and we've got a group of people who are willing to help. With that, Mayor, thank you so much.
Welcome to everybody here, as well as those watching on SGTV. And I want to say thank you especially to our speakers, Reverend Coleman and Ms. Wilson. Your topic is certainly important, we need to do as you're talking about. So thank you for being here and reminding us always of what we have to be wary of and how we have to pay close attention to everything that happens around us and in our city. Thank you. For our guests today from the Saginaw Career Complex, many of you may have some idea, I'm very proud of that school. I've known Ms. Ivan for a few years and have been very admiring of her work. I think very highly of the career complex and what it offers. It offers skills and trade training. It offers academic credits, and it offers college credits to the students. As you heard today, it also can reward students who work hard with scholarships that are rather immense. $300,000 worth of scholarships is a lot. It's a big reward for a lot of hard, hard work. These students work hard. All the students at the Career Complex come out of there with great achievements, great knowledge, much more than they had before they went there. Some rise to higher levels because they work harder. But what is available to that school is tremendous. I don't believe we use it enough. I encourage everyone to spread the word of what's available at the Career Complex. And again, thank you and congratulations to all the students for all your hard work. And to Julie Ivan, I cannot say enough about her. Thanks again to all you do, Julie. I also want to mention, since no one else has, the African-American Cultural Festival occurred just about two weeks ago on the Saturday, the 12th. I attended, and it was really fascinating. It was wonderful. And the food was great, the presentations were great, the booths with items for sale that you could look at were fabulous. It was a great event. People need to attend this in the future. So, and if I remember correctly, it's like the 39th or 40th? 49th, even more, the longest one in the United States. Yep. So it's a tremendous event. So remember that for next year. And I think, folks, you need to get the word out more, because there's more of us who will attend. It's a great event. We also had the Old Town Bash just on August 11th to 13th. It was a great event. It's new, it's only the second time we've had it, and that's a fun event in Old Town. There's a lot happening still in Saginaw. For those who haven't been paying attention, there's many, many more events going on in the City of Saginaw this summer. Please pay attention and attend. One of which I got a notice myself in the mail today is a new event sponsored by the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy and Counterculture Arts Collective, which will be a secret Saginaw Adventure Race. It supports those two organizations. It's coming up on the, let me see, you could have the bike teams or car teams. There is a fee per team or an individual, and it sounds like it should be a lot of fun. Unfortunately, I won't be in town that day. Nonetheless, for those who haven't heard, keep your ears open, there'll be more coming Finally, I want to mention, MISTHA has awarded some $500,000 in grants to the City of Saginaw. That'll be administered to the land bank, which is really, again, tremendous for continuing to control the blight in the City of Saginaw, which has been a big help to us in helping control crime, to helping eliminate some of the problems in neighborhoods, and creating the pride amongst the neighbors who now don't have these blighted homes next to them and are seen to cleaning up and fixing up their own homes because the blight is gone. So the pride in the City of Saginaw is here, it's growing. Everyone needs to speak for it. Saginaw Awesome is here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by congratulating our students and their parents on their hard work and recognition that they so very much deserve. You should be very proud of yourselves, and I know we're very proud of you, and Saginaw has a bright future, and you guys are kind of the proof of that. So when we look at the news and we see the things that are going on, I'm always very grateful to call Saginaw home and look around at the good things we have going on here and kind of take stock in that and take comfort in the fact that we, you know, right here at home, we've, you know, got some good leaders and some very strong, bright, young women, you know, making us look good across the nation and the state. So keep that up and definitely get back to your council meetings, make sure you register to vote, you know, doctors and nurses and chefs. I mean, I imagine they're all very, you know, committed to voting, you know, when they grow up. But Mrs. Wilson, Pastor Coleman, thank you for being here. The New Ezekiel Project, thank you always for your leadership. It seems that anytime there's some sort of controversy or crisis, you know, whether it's locally or within the nation, we have such good people who, you know, come forward and start the conversation about, you know, how it impacts us here at home. And we're very fortunate to have you guys working here on our behalf. I have to concur and really second the mayor's letter to the citizens. The things that we are seeing in our country right now are, as a white woman, I guess, you know, maybe it's part of the privilege of, you know, being shocked by some of this stuff, because I know lots of people who are not at all shocked that people like this exist in our country and that there are these groups out there. I mean, we've always known that they existed, but it just seems like they have been empowered and emboldened in a way that I've never seen in my adult life, and it's sickening, and it's definitely not something that is part of the culture here, I don't believe, not certainly the way we've seen across the country, and for that, I'm very grateful. But there's no place for that here in Saginaw, as the mayor said, and we won't stand for that type of attitude out of anyone here. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Mayor, thank you for everyone in attendance. I'd like to congratulate the students, the faculty, and the parents for your great accomplishment. You serve as a great example for our city and our students of how you can take something that you love, a passion that you have, and develop it into a skill and a trade and make a living for yourself and your family. So what you're doing is a great example for a lot of people, and I appreciate that. We appreciate that. Even though Pastor Camel is not here, he left, I just wanted to congratulate him on his recent consecration as a bishop. I'd like to thank the New Birth Missionary Baptist Church and all that they do for the city. There were just a couple of, I don't know, housecleaning matters that I wanted to just raise, not expect any type of response, but recently, a national emergency was declared as to the heroin addiction, and our police chief said that much of our crime can be contributed to drugs. And with this declaration, it means increased funding available for just not police, but also social services. And so I didn't know if there was anything that the city or residents need to do to take advantage of this recent declaration. The other thing I wanted to ask about was the 44 vacancies that are amongst our commission and boards. I was just curious to know if there's any quorum issues that would avoid the city to or prevent the city from conducting its day-to-day service. I had several individuals come to me asking about possibly volunteering for a board position, and I believe some of the board positions are available to non-residents, but I guess I just wasn't clear as to who would be able to sit on which boards. And so if I have some more information, I can probably help recruit some of these vacant And so, if I have some more information, I can probably help recruit some of these vacancies. I would like to thank all the active civil groups that are here today. There's quite a bit, and I'm just encouraged and can't heal, can't feel how blessed the city is to have such courageous activism in the city. We have the Ezekiel Project, NAACP. I'm sure there's several fraternities and sororities here, but I see Alpha Phi Alpha here, New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, Prisoners on Patrol. I see some members from the lead organization here, the Bridge Center for Racial Harmony. And that leads me to think about someone who recently passed, who was very influential in my life as far as when I was in college, when I read most, if not all, of his books, and that's Dick Gregory. He's a very underrepresented and unrecognized civil activist. This man was headed for a great career as a comedian, but he sacrificed that because he fought for something he believed in, and that was civil rights. And I think NAACP taught us this lesson a few years ago when they did not support the millage. And, and what they said was that, hey, look, this is not a popular position we're taking, but it's a position that, that needs to be taken. And all the organizations here do that. And again, I believe our city is very fortunate to have courageous organizations such as these to be involved in, in our city and city government. And I like to commend the city council as well as city staff because we never, or, and you never, really belittle a position that was brought to council, or talked down on it, or not listened. And I believe if we continue that effort, we can avoid something that, something like what happened in Charlottesville, because we can have productive dialogue without the violence. And I believe that's an example that Saginaw can set for this country. So, I'd just like to thank you for your hard work to make Saginaw what it is today, and I look forward to what it's going to look like tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
I too want to thank our speakers, former councilman and Pastor Charles Coleman. Thank you so much for your great words. I did attend the New Ezekiel meeting on Saturday and was very encouraged by the community output and outcry for what happened down in Charlottesville and taking a very proactive start to preventing that from happening here in our own community. And Ms. Leo Wilson, thank you so much. Thank you so much for being the watchdog out there. Keep, keep after us, keep us doing the things that we need to be done, that have to be done, and certainly appreciate that. And to all the students, once again, congratulations. We're getting down to the end of our agenda, and if you would like to stick around, I'd feel it an honor if I could have my picture taken with you, if you would like that, or any of the city council members. This is a once-in-a-lifetime for you, except some of you keep coming back. I know a couple of you have come back, and we like that. But we, we're going to make ourselves available for you right after city council meeting is over for that. And so, with that, I don't want to take up any more time. Madam Clerk?
Your next order of business is reports from the manager.
Thank you. I thought, I thought, I thought they were avoiding the photo op. First, I'd like to remind everyone of the chief's citywide neighborhood meeting this Thursday at 5:30. It's being hosted by the Covenant Neighborhood Association this month, and it's at the Communication Workers of America Hall, which is 1614 Marshawn. Also mentioned that the mayor and I attended an open house that the MACC had at the Bancroft, showcasing the Bancroft and Eddy project and the community revitalization program for especially Senator Horn and Representative Kelly and Representative Gata. The Bancroft and Eddy, if you recall, received a million dollars in the CRP program, and the SVRC marketplace received 3.48 million dollars from that program. So, hopefully, the legislature continues to fund that. It's been good for projects in the city, and we do have a few more projects that have submitted or will be submitting applications for that program. That's grant or loans for development gap financing, and it replaced some tax cuts that were in place previously. As Mayor Protem mentioned, the city did receive five hundred thousand dollars in blight elimination grant from MISTDA. The grant will be used to demolish 67 blighted residential structures in the city in cooperation with the Saginaw County Land Bank. As we've seen from SVSU studies, and they continue to review this, the blight elimination program has been shown to reduce crime in the city. So, we plan to continue the process as it has been working for us, and I'd like to thank John Stempel and the City Inspections Department who work on this project and has, have worked on it since inception with the Saginaw County Treasurer, Tim Novak, and the land bank. Also would thank Tom Miller and Cassie from the Saginaw Future. They completed the grant application for the city. And if you'll look at the press release from MISTDA, the city did receive the highest award. There was another grantee that received 500,000, but I think that's a testament to the work that, that the city staff and the county land bank have been doing. Regarding the fire department and hiring, I would mention that they do have a couple of new programs in the fire department, and you've all seen the DICE program. And they came to the city-county school liaison meeting last week to talk about the Explorer program that they've launched. And that's all in an effort to, to get local students interested in the Saginaw Fire Department and fire service in general as a career. So, I'd have to thank the fire department staff. They're the ones that, that do come up with these ideas, and you're all aware that, you know, with Civil Service Commission that we have, sometimes you have to, you have to work with the commission to make hires. It's not all our decision on who we hire. So, just mention that as well. Our mission/vision statement group for the city council met again, and we did, as a group, come up with a draft for both the mission and vision statement. So, we're planning to schedule a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the statements on Wednesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. If any council members cannot make that time, please contact Vicki Davis or Debbie Powell to let us know. If most council members can make it, we'll, we'll keep that time. And that's going to be your meeting, so it's your opportunity to discuss this. The members, council members who serve on that group will be presenting that to the rest of you, and you'll have that time at the committee of the whole for discussion. There won't be any action taken since it's a committee of the whole. It'll be at 6 o'clock. The 20th, yep. Yep, the 20th of September. So, it won't require any action at that meeting, so after you discuss it, you can take it back and think about it some more, and at a future council meeting, I'd ask that you approve it or make changes to it and make the final approval. So, that's what we'll be planning, and we'll likely get that draft out to you a few days before that meeting, so you can have it and read it before the meeting. Finally, we do have a guest here. It's not on the agenda, but related to Council Communication Number Three, which is the lease agreement for 1781 Fordney Street with the Boys and Girls Club. As we mentioned several times, we count on outside organizations to help us with activities for youth and recreation, and we had, a few meetings ago, we had the Lamar Woodley Foundation come to talk about the plans they have for the Civitan, which we worked on and deal with. So, you may, you may see in your packet that it says the Boys and Girls Club of Bay County, but it's, it does business as the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Great Lakes Bay Region. So, with that, I'll ask Herb Spence to come up and tell you a little bit about this project.
Good evening. I'm Herb Spence. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, City Council, all city staff. Appreciate all the work that's been done by city staff to help facilitate the possibility of this lease. And really, I think we all agree, and we've seen how, when youth are inspired, they can develop into great assets for our community and our community's future, and there's nothing more important to me and I think to probably most people in this room than the future of our community, and that's going to be depending on, on our youth. So, that's why the former Boys and Girls Club did a great job providing services to children in Saginaw for 19 years. The Saginaw Boys and Girls Club ceased operations at the end of 2010, and at that time, the Boys and Girls Club, which was doing a little better in Bay County, reached out and wanted to know if they could help fill that void that had been created by the loss of the important programs that were happening. And they very generously gave their time and, and their, their funds from their foundation to help make that possible. It provides seed money, and they also involved a number of Saginaw people on their board, including Pete Shaheen and myself. And, you know, I was not involved with the club in the past, other than supporting it through fundraisers and things, but I know how important that work, that work is, so I was glad to, glad to do that. Over the last few years, this new regional collaboration, which is now known as the Boys and Girls Club of the Great Lakes Bay Region, has resulted in a significant increase in registered members in five sites. There's Bay City, Carlton, Essexville, Pinconning, and Saginaw, which is currently at the Stone School site. And there are over 2,400 members, which is a significant increase at those five, at those four, five sites, and which is, and also has a daily average of attendance of a total of about 500 youth, both after school during the school year and in the summer, summer months. And the current Stone School unit is bursting at the seams. It is really not meant to hold as many kids as we have, but we don't want to turn them away. That and the fact that we have always needed a, always knew we needed a true home base in Saginaw County for our services in Saginaw, and so we've been looking for such a place that we could serve more kids, and especially in areas that currently need it. There are underserved areas at the south end of the, the city, great programs in the north, First Ward and others, north part of the city. And we did have the unit out in Stone School, the west side. Really, the south and middle of the, middle of the city have been underserved with programs right now, and so we looked for one, and we found a great partner to collaborate with to make it feasible to add this new unit. And it's our Kids Campus Collaboration with the Saginaw YMCA, and it will increase membership, offer more diverse programs and services, including swimming lessons and improve, as well as improving academic achievement among children and teens in Saginaw, and instill healthy habits, improve citizenship, and see fewer children left home alone. The former JA building will provide much-needed space for the educational arts and STEM programs that the Boys and Girls Club is very successful with, and that will be a great complement to the facilities at the YMCA, which will also be used, or the gymnasium certainly, and, and the swimming on a, on a scheduled basis. With me tonight is Ginger Dziewicki, CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, and Steve Meyer, CEO of the YMCA. If they could stand, these two people deserve a round of applause for their hard work that they've done. Both, both individually in their own organizations, as well as even more effectively and efficiently now starting a collaboration, and that collaboration actually has already started this summer with the Y inviting the Boys and Girls Club, about 30 kids, up to their camp timbers for what is definitely a transformational experience for kids that have not seen that or experienced that type of learning experience and just social experience. So, in summary, we thank you for considering the approval of this lease that will allow us to serve more kids in the city of Saginaw and do, do so much more effectively and efficiently. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
A year ago, when Junior Achievement consolidated some of their services, so we're glad to have a, a partner to take, take the building over as a lease and, and provide these services. As you all know, you know, another empty building isn't something that the city needed to have, so we're appreciative that the group will be able to put programs in there and utilize the building. And with that, that concludes the management update.
We are now at the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. Any motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions? Been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is reports from boards and commissions and committees.
There's no appointments. Is there any reports from any of the council members at this time? Yes.
When are the appointments going to be? Are they going to do them all at once, or the appointments to the boards and commissions that we've been asking people to join?
I believe as soon as applications come in, they're processed, and, and then as soon as they're processed, and if they qualify, they'll come to us immediately, but we have to let that process happen.
How long, how long is the process?
Could be, could be a couple of days. Not long at all.
Okay, week or two, a month?
What's that?
A week or a month, two months? I was just curious.
The process?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
A week sometimes, yeah. Two weeks sometimes.
In a week or two, should they call an ax, or? Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
So, are we going to, at one point, council help make decisions, remember Andy, me, you, Larry, Dennis? Are we going to go back to that, or we going to leave it in the clerk's hands?
The clerk refers them to the, to the, to the manager and myself and to the mayor Protem at this point.
Okay, no, remember, we had.
I know we did that, but that was, but right now, that, that committee is now just over. But if you have recommendations or anyone, please, 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 you know, move forward on that. We're trying to fill all the boards. The last, I, I know the city clerk's office has worked very hard in getting that information out on all the boards.
Yeah.
Here's what the board's about, here's who qualifies, here's what they do. They've been constantly, there's the booklet right there. This is the booklet that they've been handing out. And so, we have those available and been meeting them with neighborhood associations and other groups they've been meeting with, so we certainly tried to do that. That same information was there Saturday morning at the New Ezekiel Project. That same information was there also, so we, unless, we're going to start going around and knocking on the doors, I don't know what else, other than knock on doors. And we probably did that when we did Light Up the City.
There you go.
Okay. Any others on boards and commissions?
Next order of business is motions and miscellaneous business.
Is there anything to come before the council, council members? Being none? Been moved and supported to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed?